Welcome, everybody, to the April 9th County Council Meeting. Welcome to our meeting. Please have roll call.
The invocation first and then pledge?
Yes.
You're ready to go tonight, aren't you?
Yeah. We'd like to have Brad Harris come up and do our invocation, and then Mike Ealem will lead us in the pledgery.
Let's pray together, may we? Well, we're thankful and grateful for your goodness to us. We're thankful that we're free in this country, and we're able to enjoy the good things of being in this community. And for the things that need to be discussed this evening, I pray you just bless this meeting. Thank you for all those who serve in any way to help the greater good of our community, our cities, our state, and our country. We do pray that you just bless each individual here tonight who've taken time out of their day to do something to help in any way possible to decide what's best for all of us. We ask you again just to continue to bless in this area in which we live, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ealem.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Next, we have a public hearing on Saratoga Heights Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement Go ahead and open up that public hearing. Is anybody here to speak on the Saratoga Heights? Is anybody here to speak on the Saratoga Heights public comments regarding the sanitary sewer district? Please come forward.
Thank you, members of the County Council, Mr. Chairman, Arnie A.C. Dinoff, public advocate and resident. Just a few comments about the Saratoga Sewer Protection District. We have a lot of little political subdivisions inside St. Charles County, and there's a big requirement that they have to supply an annual report in compliance with state statute, and also a sunshine request, which would be open meeting records, and to make sure they do everything fairly and above board. And also, they need to comply with state statute in reference to giving to their residents an annual audit of their financials. So I ask, since we have many of these CIDs, neighborhood improvement districts, community improvement districts, transportation development districts, and other such districts across the county, that we make sure that they are open, transparent, and honest with the residents that they serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public comments on the public hearing for the Saratoga Heights Sanitary Sewer District. Next, we have public comments. On the public comments, we allow up to three speakers to address the council on any topic. However, once a topic is open for discussion, only six speakers are allowed alternate pro and con positions. Each speaker has a limit of three minutes. If you have the same comment on a previously mentioned, you can just say ditto, and your comments will be written in such on the record. The clerk will call forward first speaker from our speaker cards.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the rules just for this evening to allow three additional speakers, pro and con. So rather than three for and three against, a motion would be to allow six speakers for and six speakers against.
Second. I think that's a good idea. I have that and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? We'll allow up to six speakers on that, on the topic.
While we're amending the agenda, I'd like to go ahead and, one, we start introductions to move 4583 first, to have a topic conversation on that one, and change the order.
Second.
I had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Did you mean as the first bill, or are you going ahead of public comment?
No, no, we're going ahead, the first bill. Yeah, not, no, yeah.
Bill for introduction, not bill for final passage.
Yeah, we're the first introductory bill.
Okay. Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We have our first speaker, please.
The first speaker on Bill Number 4583 would be Eric. Boy, I don't know, sorry, so sorry.
You can proceed. Go ahead.
Thank you for hearing me today regarding the proposed residences in Missouri Research Park. I'm sure you have all heard about the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from a few weeks ago, where they voted eight to one against the project. I hope you get a chance to watch the meeting or read through the transcripts. I would like to highlight a handful of important opposition points. Not one county resident spoke in support of the project. Not one business within Research Park spoke in favor of the project. To the contrary, Zoltec, the business closest to the proposed development, expressed a concern that the new residents of the area could easily levy complaints of noise and light pollution against Zoltec. No amount of subdivision covenants nor buyer awareness campaigns will sway a resident's opinion on who is at fault for disturbing their peace and tranquility. Zoltec is likely to suffer significant public backlash despite having been in this location long before these new residents. I don't believe this is a fair way to treat our longstanding businesses in the county. They pay taxes to St. Charles County, and they employ many St. Charles County residents. By admission of the project's stone-owned traffic study, the most convenient and most likely source for groceries and supplies of these new St. Charles County residents would be the shops in Chesterfield Valley. I hope you all support and approve development projects that encourage new residents to spend money at local businesses within St. Charles County. This proposal does not do that. Initially, this project was promoted as low-impact by a post-dispatch article back in December. Upon closer inspection of the details, many of us no longer believe that this will be low-impact. In order for them to have the appearance of being low-impact, their proposed solutions involve narrower-than-normal streets, reduced setback distances, subdivision covenants that restrict parking allowances, vegetation, herbicide, pesticide, and on and on. The zoning staff had noted that narrower streets would be a concern for emergency vehicles. Since these streets in this proposal are to be privately owned, law enforcement would have limited ability to enforce street parking bans. So who will enforce all of these covenants? These remedies sound good in a proposal, but in practice, we believe they will not be effective. Can you imagine the immediate backlash in the event that homes and lives might be lost if a fire truck cannot navigate these narrow, windy, steep streets? Planning and Zoning Commission rejected the idea that this will be low-impact with their vote earlier this month. I'm a resident of Weldon Spring, which borders the proposed project. On behalf of them and many other St. Charles County residents adversely impacted by this ten-year project, I ask that you reject this and all future proposed residential development in and around the Bluffs. Thank you.
Yeah. Have our next speaker, please.
Now, in support of Bill 4583 would be Kevin Hogg.
I'm here representing the University of Missouri System in support of the NT Home Builders' rezoning application, and to clarify for the record, the university's interest and authority relative to the subject project. Initially acquired to support its teaching and research mission, the university utilized the property as an agricultural experiment station and research farm for more than 20 years. As a steward of its natural resources, when the university elected to conclude its teaching and research operations at the property, the university evaluated uses for the land and elected to preserve over 90% of the property in its natural state by selling 7,230 acres to the Missouri Department of Conservation in 1979. Later, to further its mission of economic development and research, the university, in collaboration with St. Charles County, dedicated a portion of the remaining 700-acre property to establish the Missouri Research Park as a catalyst for the technology corridor and economic development in this region. Finally, in support of its public service mission, the university facilitated the development of such public amenities within the region as the Missouri Bluffs Golf Course and the Great Rivers Greenway Trail through the Missouri Research Park. Over the past three years, the university has been thoughtful in its consideration of this sale, selecting for the project a developer committed to working with interested parties and refining his plan to optimize the project and mitigate its impacts. The university's rationale for supporting the sale is as follows: The proposed plan takes into account the effects of development on its surroundings and seeks to mitigate those impacts while still delivering a unique housing alternative for St. Charles County. The signature housing development in proximity to the Missouri Research Park would complement the 30-year economic development initiative undertaken by St. Charles County and the university. Development of the property as a harmonious residential project with the Missouri Bluffs Golf Course offers a lighter impact to the subject site, golf course, and neighboring lands than does development alternatives such as multifamily, light industrial, office, and lodging. Proceeds from the sale will support the university's academic, research, and economic development missions, and development of the property as a residential community serving as an amenity to the Missouri Research Park best positions the park for continued prosperity in the region. Some questions have arisen concerning the university's authority for the sale. In its letter to the county councillor dated April 3, 2018, the university confirmed that it has full authority to sell the property. As a matter of fact, the Board of Curators authorized the sale on October 6 and 7, 2016. Missouri statute authorizes the sale by the Board of Curators, and the limited exceptions within the statute do not apply to this transaction. Missouri Research Park statute and Platts are inapplicable, no federal deed restrictions prohibit sale, and St. Charles County is the proper venue for this rezoning application to be heard.
Excuse me, your time's up, but I hope you stick around, because I think there's members of the county council that have questions for you when we get to that, and we had asked you to come back up at that time.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Against Bill Number 4583, Dan Burkhart.
My name is Dan Burkhart, and I'm speaking for the Katy Land Trust in magnificent Missouri. I spent my career at Edward Jones, where I was involved in financing and starting a variety of businesses. That experience and my interest in conservation taught me that natural areas like this can create economic opportunity, and few places are better examples of that than southern St. Charles County, where the landscape of the 19th century has somehow survived into the 21st century. The area we're discussing offers real qualities that are becoming more scarce in today's virtual world. These qualities distinguish St. Charles as a place where the history and the nature of our river valley can be experienced close to home, at Bush and Weldon Spring Conservation Areas, Klondike Park, the Boone Home, the Katy Trail, the Confluence, and on the historic St. Charles Main Street and Riverfront. Since 2013, I've published two books about this area, and one of them has been provided to you. I've worked with communities from St. Charles to Herman to explore how this remarkable collection of natural assets can attract more visitors who value these experiences. The area that I've just described is also the beginning of the German Heritage Corridor, a project of the Missouri Humanities Council, and I've provided each of you with an article that describes that effort. The entrance, the gateway to this corridor, is the location of the proposed subdivision. It would be a tightly-packed suburban development on steep forested land in a place where this kind of development has never occurred. This proposal is comparable to a future county council being asked to develop the land surrounding the Boone Home. The Boone Home would still be there, but it wouldn't provide the same experience. Your acceptance of the P&amp;Z recommendation will give the University of Missouri an opportunity to pursue other alternatives for this land as currently zoned. The university has the resources and the skills to find a better, more appropriate alternative for this remarkable piece of land. There are many flat, open fields that can be converted to subdivisions in St. Charles County, but there's no other place with a history and potential future benefits like this. At the March 21 planning and zoning hearing, this room was packed. Over 120 people, almost all from St. Charles County, lined up to express their feelings. Those who spoke had many different backgrounds and perspectives, but they had two things in common: They all loved the land in question, and they all opposed the development. During that hearing, five people did speak in favor of the development, and they had something in common as well. Each one was paid by the developer to be there. Not a single member of the public came to speak in favor of the proposal on March 21. For all of these reasons, the Planning and Zoning Commission rejected this idea. I ask you to do the same. The proposed subdivision would have a negative impact on the future of this beautiful and historic area and the economic, recreational, and cultural future of St. Charles County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
In support, Stephen Wild.
I want to announce my presence to the council. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm with the Office of General Counsel of the University of Missouri, and I am here for any questions you have regarding the authority of the university's intent in the transaction. If you have any questions, I'm here for you. Otherwise, I'll ditto the slides that Mr. Hogg has presented.
Okay, we may have some questions for you once we bring that bill before the council, so hang on. Next speaker, please.
Daniel Rathel.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dan Rathel. I am a member of the Board of Trustees with the town of Weldon Spring Heights. Our town was incorporated in 1950. For generations, our small, tight-knit community has strived to protect not only our residents' quality of life, but also the historic track of land that extends from the river to Highway 94. We believe the developer's plan is full of exceptions, variances, and unanswered questions. We also believe it contains numerous inaccurate calculations and misrepresentations of laws and facts. Those issues were eloquently pointed out by a variety of area residents and stakeholders at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearings on this proposal. We believe that this development plan does not conform nor fit surrounding land uses or zoning districts that consist of agricultural and conservation land, the Missouri Research Park, and the town of Weldon Spring Heights. This fragile Missouri bluff is simply not conducive to build such a dense residential housing development. The tree clearing, blasting, grading, and infill that will be needed will have a devastating effect on both the Bluffs' landscape and the habitat and migratory patterns of a considerable amount of the area's wildlife population. We also believe this development will have a direct and substantial negative effect on the residents of the town of Weldon Spring Heights. At the last planning and zoning hearing, the developer's attorney, Brad Gross, stated that the town of Weldon Spring Heights and Missouri Research Park have coexisted and are compatible. This simply is not true. The University of Missouri's Research Park has done great harm to the enjoyment of the property for the residents of the town. Since its inception, the businesses of Missouri Research Park have subjected residents of our town to excessive noise, lights, odors, and traffic. Nuisances created by the manufacturing companies like Nike and Diagraf remain unresolved. The University of Missouri officials have shown no interest or expressed any intention of getting involved with the settling of nuisance problems incurred by the town, but tell us that they have the right to operate in whatever manner they choose. We would like to note that in the first hearing of the rezoning application, the Planning and Zoning Commission stated the county did not want to take over maintaining the roads within the Research Park because they do not conform to St. Charles County standards in their current state. We would add that in addition to those inadequate road standards, the western entrance of the Missouri Research Park is a public safety hazard. It is poorly designed, lacks appropriate speed control mechanisms, and has inadequate site distance near the intersection of Weldon Spring Heights Drive and Research Park Drive. Furthermore, at the last planning and zoning hearing, the associate engineer for the developer stated, "We did not find one crash at the intersection of Weldon Spring Heights Drive and Missouri Research Park Drive." We can assure...
Time's up, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, the next three speakers, I'm not sure if you're going to address the council this time. Lee Cannon? Now? Okay.
Hey, Lee, I think I should go. We've got one speaker left, right?
Well, no, you have six. We've allowed six on each.
All right, you can go ahead.
Good evening, chairman, members of the council. My name is Lee Cannon. I'm a principal and traffic engineer with CBB here in St. Louis, and I completed the traffic impact study for the development dated February 13, 2018. I believe you have a copy of that. As part of my opening remarks, I'll mention to you that I will be here if there's any technical questions. I'd be happy to answer anything that I don't answer as part of these remarks. But as part of the development proposal, we were asked to do a traffic impact study, which includes taking traffic counts to identify existing conditions. We made observations on the area roadways. We met with MODOT and county officials to understand what some of their concerns may be, pardon me, county staff, and then proceeded to look at how many additional trips would be generated by the proposed new homes. In the original traffic study, we were looking at around 371 total new residential units. That number, I understand, has been reduced somewhat to about 360 units. The trips that will be generated by the new homes will be on the order of 255 trips in the morning peak hour and 340 trips in the afternoon peak hour. While those trips will be distributed to the roadway network, a substantial number of those trips will be oriented directly to the interchange at I-64 at Research Park Circle. Other trips will navigate their way to Route 94 to other destinations throughout the region. School sites, jobs, and other shopping opportunities will dictate those routes. As a part of a traffic impact study, what we do is use operational evaluations to determine an existing level. We add on the additional trips based on the number of those trips and the anticipated directional distributions, and then we look to see if there will be any impact. That's the traffic impact side of the story. And it's not up to the traffic engineer to decide whether or not you approve the development or not. We assume that if it's developed, it will be successful, it will be built out, and it will generate those trips. After looking at the trip generation, we identify if there are any impacts, and when you add cars, there will definitely be impacts. The question, though, is, do those impacts go above and beyond the capacity of this existing system and therefore necessitate improvements or mitigation measures to the roadway? In this instance, we did not identify the need for mitigation improvements. The system roadways in and around the site would accommodate the traffic. There are some specific geometric improvements recommended in the report and summarized in the conclusion.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Against, Steve Powell.
Committee council members and chairman, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Steve Powell. I'm the former director of the Greater St. Charles Convention Visitors Bureau from 1988 to 2005, am also CEO of Destination Services, a national tourism consulting firm, and I co-own the Boone's Colonial Inn at 322 South Main in historic St. Charles. Having been involved with the Katy Trail from its point of conception during my 12-year tenure with the Missouri State Parks, I can attest to the vision back in the 1980s. It was not a vision of subdivisions topping pristine Missouri River Bluffs. It was a vision of interface with Missouri River landscapes and authentic Missouri River communities. The Katy was developed with two major objectives in mind: Provide a trail experience that improve the quality of life for both Missourians and visitors, and to bring economic synergy via tourism to small rural communities, small towns. As one who has worked with Missouri tourism for over 40 years, I can tell you that St. Charles County has achieved both of those objectives with the Katy Trail. From Mawkins to St. Charles and through the Missouri River bottoms, visitors are breathing new life into small towns and wineries. The trail works. It works because one can experience Missouri's best landscapes, both physically and visually, without intrusions from modern urbanism. The Katy Trail is a unique tourism asset that sets St. Charles County apart in the tourism competitive marketplace. I urge you to protect the visual integrity of this nationally recognized trail and its pristine bluffs by supporting Planning and Zoning's decision to deny this development. A decision to deny this PUD is a decision to continue the tourism economic engine created by the Katy Trail and its contributions to the quality of life for the residents of St. Charles County and Missourians. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
In support, Doug Teeman.
My name's Doug Teeman. I'm an engineer with Picket Ray &amp; Silver. Our firm has prepared the preliminary development plan for the Missouri Bluffs. I want to speak briefly about streets and some of the principles we used. I also want to mention that we have met with Mark Bailey from the Cotterville Fire Protection District. Brad Goss and myself sat down with Mark and discussed the roads, the grades, and everything about the development. The only comments pertaining to the road from the Cotterville Fire District were they wanted the cul-de-sacs larger than we show on the plan. We currently show them at 96-foot diameter, 90-foot diameter, excuse me. They would like them increased to 96. We agreed and said we could do that. The additional requirement was they wanted any dead-end streets that are over 500 feet in length to be widened to 26 feet. They had no objection to the 20-foot-wide streets we're proposing throughout the development or any of the grades that we're proposing throughout the development. And additionally, as I spoke, we are routing these streets specifically to do a minimum amount of grading and land disturbance on the site. When you look at the plan, you see a plan where we're running down the ridges and doing a minimum footprint for our grading so that those roads will be placed in the optimum position to prevent grading, to prevent the cutting of trees, and also match the terrain as much as possible. We have done several looks and revisions to this plan. We have revised it, so we are not impacting any streams or any identified wetlands from the U.S. Corps of Engineers, and we've actually got approval on our first phase without the U.S. Corps of Engineers, and we've actually got approval on our first phase without doing any kind of impacts for those. So that's the process we went through. It's been a very extensive process, and we've definitely done a lot to try to minimize that. Thank you.
Stephen Jeffrey?
Good evening. My name is Steve Jeffrey. I'm an attorney with Jeffrey Law Group in Chesterfield. I represent Zoltec Corporation. We have appeared before the P&amp;Z Commission several times. We've offered a substantial amount of evidence into the record, which shows primarily the area of contention. I don't know if you can bring that up, but the Zoltec operates a carbon fiber, high-tech manufacturing facility in the Missouri Research Park. It's operated that facility for over 25 years. They manufacture advanced carbon fiber products primarily for use in brake linings of large, I mean, large commercial aircraft. In addition, some of their products are used in fireproofing suits and used in various other applications. In addition to their manufacturing activities, they do engage in research activities on site. They're constantly trying to find ways to improve their products and expand the applications that their high-tech carbon fiber can be used in. Looking at the map, this is from the development plan. Zoltec's property is shown in green. The Missouri Bluff Golf Course is down in this area. Here's the Dukka Creek Sewer Plant. The area of the proposed development that Zoltec takes issue with is the area that's depicted in orange on the map. Of this approximate 25 acres, it's very hilly, it's heavily wooded, it falls back behind to the west and southwest of Zoltec. It drains most all of the stormwater from Zoltec's property and partially some from the Nike property, which adjoins this. The concerns that Zoltec has, again, as related in the correspondence which has been provided to St. Charles County in the past, is stormwater, the fact that this whole area will have to be denuded in order to be constructed, involves a lot of destruction of the native habitat, will alter the stormwater flows. But more importantly, of immediate concern to Zoltec as a business, which has been in St. Charles County and a significant employer for such a long period of time, is the fact that residential development is incompatible with an industrial facility such as this. Zoltec operates 24/7. They have trucks coming, making deliveries in the middle of the night. It emits noise. It has lights on all the time. It will interfere with anyone who lives in this area, their perceptions of what their quiet enjoyment of their property might be. And I think, as one of the earlier speakers pointed out, regardless if someone buys a piece of property here, and regardless what the disclosure says in the paperwork that they sign, regardless what's in their deed, they're still going to have a problem, and they're going to look to Zoltec because that's who they believe will be the source.
Thank you very much.
And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah. I think we may have some questions from the council, so I ask you to stick around and bring this bill up.
Charles Coverley?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Charles Coverley. I work for Native Landscape Solutions. My background is I'm a botanist, and we are an ecological restoration company. So we've been brought in to sit down and talk to you about what does this really mean? What kind of development is this, and can it be done? And my first answer to you is, yes, it can be done. It's being done across the country. Most recently, it was done at the Mercy Virtual Care Center at Clarkson and Highway 64 in Chesterfield, where they went in and did a lot to preserve their native plantings that were there, the existing plantings that were there, and then everything that went in to restore the area that was developed, all of the aprons are all native species. This is conservation development. This is different. This is different than any kind of residential development that you have seen thus far in St. Charles County. This is a unique site. If you read your report, two of the commissioners from the Planning and Zoning Committee said that this is a great idea, it's just the wrong site. And I would argue that it's just exactly the right site because it is so unique, it requires a unique solution to the situation. The golf course creates a green desert in which very little native plant material and native insects and fauna can exist in. There's no edge there, and if you're a property owner and you enjoy being in the outdoors, you realize that the most diverse wildlife is on the edge. It's on the edge, the transition from the field to the forest. What this development is doing is clearing 60 acres for streets and homes, which will become strictly edge. It will be all native planting. There will be no lawn. There will be no curbs. There will be no gutters. All of the stormwater will be handled within the site with native species. Native prairie species can handle up to nine inches of rain per hour per acre. That's quite a bit. And so we're able to be able, we are able to create the design of the situation, the design of this development uniquely. It's a conservation development. This isn't a farm field. We're not tearing down a fence row or an old barn. It's a unique wooded site, and the solution that's being proposed before you tonight is unique. It is all native. It's been done across the country. It was done successfully up in, just outside of the Chicago area. It's ecological-based. It's all native plant material, creating an opportunity for native birds, native insects, native mammals to exist and expand. It's an improvement to the site because the current golf course doesn't offer that opportunity.
Not going to have any outbursts like that. I mean, everybody's been listening to your comments, so please have some respect for the speaker.
In addition, in addition, the site we're talking about, looking at invasive species. We're all about ready to fall in love with the Calory Pear again this spring as it all turns white along the highway right-of-way. Those are invasive species, and part of this project is to address invasive species right next to this key corridor. Thank you.
Thank you.
The sixth speaker against would be John Ortman.
Hello, gentlemen. I'm not here representing anybody but myself. I am not being paid to be here like some people are. I am a St. Charles County resident for the last 40 years. I also live close to the Katy Trail. I use it all the time. I walk on it. I take my grandchildren on it. I bicycle on it. This is a bad idea. The last thing we need, and I've watched development out here for the last 40 years because it was pretty quiet when I got here, even from the city. I was used to a lot of noise and traffic. Came out here, it was nice and quiet. Progress, brought people out, more building. This is one place where I can get away. I can have quiet. I can have peace. I can have nature. And you start building along this, it's just going to open the floodgates. They're going to, like they said before, any kind of construction is going to lead down to that trail, you know? It's going to bring, when the people are in there and they're planting their grasses and all that, and they're using their chemicals, it's all going to come down that way. The noise from the people in their houses is all going to filter down that way when I'm trying to enjoy a little peace and quiet, a little bit of nature, which is exactly what the Katy Trail was put there for. That's all I got to say. Thank you, gentlemen.
That is the last speaker card I have on that issue, and then we have one from Mr. Deanhoff. You didn't fill out a card, but you'd have one more slide.
I'm, I will take care of that. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Brad Goss. I'm with the firm of Smith-Homson, 120 South Central, Suite 700, St. Louis, Missouri. Appreciate your taking the time to consider this project. If you listened to the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, then obviously you've heard a lot of information about this project. It was a long hearing. I do think there are a number of misconceptions about this project. It truly is a low-impact project. That's the whole design purpose of it. It is a project where you have .78 housing units per acre. That's less than one housing unit per acre. You have, in your own code, one to four houses is considered low-density. So this is a low-density project. It's been a question about whether the golf course should be included as part of the density calculations because one of the folks who is opposed to this project has said it's commercial. That's just not accurate. She cited a case, it's a general kind of case, Missouri Court of Appeals for the Eastern District and Zimmerman versus Missouri Bluffs, has actually ruled that the Missouri Bluffs should be classified as residential. It is a residential property. Golf courses are treated as residential property, and there's lots of precedent for that. If you look at Moore, you look at Wing Haven, that's the way those developments are treated. They treat the golf course as an amenity and as something that provides open space, and they trade off density for that. That's what we're doing here. By including the golf course in this project, the golf course doesn't go away. The golf course is now subject to this planned unit development zoning. So if people believe that the golf course is an amenity for St. Charles County, this is a good way to assure that that continues to happen. This project also has a tremendous economic benefit for the taxing districts in which it is located. We had the county assessor do some projections for us. I think you may have them. And, you know, the estimated tax revenue that's estimated to come from this project after build-out is $2.6 million per year. To the Francis House School District alone, it'll be $1.8 million per year, what's estimated will go to them. That's a significant amount of money, and it's a very positive thing for the citizens of St. Charles. It makes sense to do this development because your comprehensive plan calls for it. We are next to the urban service area, which is the Missouri Research Park. If you have utilities, sanitary sewers, and water, your comprehensive plan says that's something that ought to be developed. Developing as low-density residential is logical, given its proximity, and no, the floodgates cannot open because we have 21,000 acres of conservation ground to the west of us that can never be developed. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then last speaker, Arnie Deanhoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Arnie A.C. Deanhoff, public advocate and resident. I have two things I'd like to discuss with the council. The first thing is on your consent agenda for the purchase of furniture in the amount of $230,000 for the new emergency management center. Why can't we use the equipment that we've updated each and every year that's been in the capital improvement budget at the emergency operations center right across the street from the courthouse? Why are we to keep expending and expending and expending taxpayer funds like it's water and like we have dollars that are growing on trees right outside this building? It's unfortunate that we can't reuse and repurpose the furniture, and that we keep spending lots and lots of hundreds of thousands of dollars on furniture. The second item I'd like to talk about is the park special service fund. It's a tax, a sales tax on Internet purchases over $2,000. Most corporations in the county pay it, like True Manufacturing, to be an example, or MasterCard, when they buy something on the Internet over $2,000 or an out-of-state purchase. It goes to a special service fund that buys our park lands. I'm asking the county council to immediately enter into negotiations with the University of Missouri System and its Board of Curators to secure 387 acres in the Missouri Research Park. There's going to be effects of the Katy Trail, the Spur Trail, there's conservation restrictions that came from the federal government where Missouri bought that land for $1. Now the university's trying to make a profit here. I'd like the county parks department to buy this property as a county park to protect the open green space, the non-removal of trees and Missouri species, and buffer areas to the Katy and Spur Trails. The same scenario presented against this county council last year when I recommended and asked you to purchase the new Melly Lakes Golf Course on Forest Dell Road. We have currently $50 million sitting in the special service fund to buy park land that's reserved funds from Internet sales use to protect these lands and protect our 425,000 county residents. This should remain as publicly owned and protected lands as it has since 1936, as open space and recreational use. You turned down a zoning plant just last year, or last six months, next to the Missouri Department of Transportation commuter lot. I asked that the county council enter into negotiations with the attorney that was sent, general counsel, the Board of Curators, to secure this land and to make sure that it's not developed but protected for all of us and our future generations to use. We have to have a distinct balance and protections and a classy-type zoning here in St. Charles County. We expect that. I ask you to resoundly vote down the bill that's before you and purchase the land for county use. Thank you.
That is all the cards I have.
Okay, that concludes our public comment period. Next, we have, I guess we're going to...
Oral report from county executive.
There is no oral report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
So we moved the bill to the next before the consent agenda...
We're doing consent agenda, and then before we go on to bills.
Can I have a motion, or are there any comments on the consent agenda, items to be removed?
Motion approved.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pause. Hearing none.
Bill for final passage?
Yes.
Bill number 4580, an ordinance amending Section 405.080.0B of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance, to add water utility substations or pumping stations as permissible uses in the A agricultural zoning districts.
Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, please read it again.
Bill number 4580, an ordinance amending Section 405.080.0B of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance, to add water utility substations or pumping stations as permissible uses in the A agricultural zoning districts. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Thank you. That bill passes. Moving on to the next bill, I guess we're, that was the only bill for final passage? We suspended the order to move to the bill, which bill was that? 4583.
Okay. Bill number 4583, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from AFF Agricultural District with A Floodway Fringe Overlay District to R1A FFPUD, Single Family Residential District with Floodway Fringe and Planned Unit Development Overlay Districts as application PUD 18-01.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
We don't have any questions on this. No, I'm kidding. Okay. We heard a lot of different comments. We've been getting a lot of different correspondence, letters, and so forth, emails. And so after the planning and zoning meeting, I had a whole bunch of questions, and so I wanted to just get the facts right, and then we'll continue on with the conversation. So the questions that I sent to administration, we're going to go through them on the board here, and we're going to talk about each point and clarify it. Fact, it's going to be fact-based. It's, I think there's nine questions, and these are the questions I had for staff, and I'm sure some of the council members are curious, and then we'll go from there for more open conversation. Who, you or Mike, Keith, Mr. Hayeswood?
Mr. Chairman, may it please the council, the list of questions that were generated by councilmember Brazel included a question about, is this property considered bush wildlife? And I will answer that question here in a minute, but let me give a little bit of a background. I think it will help the situation, because I likewise have been hearing comments that I think include some misunderstanding of the history here. So answering the question about bush wildlife will allow perhaps an opportunity to clear up some of the history of the land transactions. The, what you have in front of you here is a map done by the GIS department in the county. So with respect to what you see up here, and I hope you can see it on the screen there or for the county council members on the tripod here, what you have is a multicolored map of this area of the intersection of Highway 94 and the Interstate 64. So they don't show up as distinctly as the land parcels do, but I think everybody can use their familiarity with the area to recognize Interstate 64 runs along this eastern edge of all these parcels, and Highway 94 then bisects it in basically an east-west manner. Now, with respect to the first question, is this property considered bush wildlife? The answer is no. Actually, this, this schematic was done on a scale of one inch equals 1,200 feet. There is about five inches, which would translate in over to a mile, between this corner of bush wildlife and the 385 acres that's under discussion here. So there's, there's slightly over a mile, and as the crow flies in distance. Now, a little bit of history to let me get rolling on that topic and try to clarify some answers. I suspect many people in this room can speak firsthand to the fact that before World War II, this entire area out here was typical St. Charles County agricultural rural farmland. Forty-acre, 80-acre parcels, some bigger, some smaller, and so forth. I don't want to get lost on a sidetrack here, but it certainly created some hard feelings for many of our old St. Charles farm families. Now, having said that, nonetheless, the federal government acquired this huge area, which was easily 20,000 acres and perhaps even more in totality. But in any event, when the war is over in 1945, the feds decide they no longer need this excess property, and so they started selling this land. And that's how it got into much of its current ownership posture. So for example, with respect to bush wildlife, that actually was sold by the federal government in November 1947. It was about $225,000 transaction at that time, and it was sold to the Missouri Department of Conservation. To give credit where it is due, the Missouri Department of Conservation got much of their money from the Bush family, and we should be grateful for the charitable intentions of Mrs. Bush especially with respect to this parcel of real estate. It was close to 7,000 acres at that time. Over the course of time, taking pieces of it for road purposes and one thing and another, it's down to right at about 6,900 acres. So the answer to the original question is, this, these 6,900 acres are absolutely not connected to Missouri Research Park, and they have nothing to do whatsoever with the 385-acre application, which is before the council. Now, moving on, another transaction occurred approximately a year later, in November 1948. This transaction was more, a little larger than 8,000 acres, whereas bush wildlife was itself not quite 7,000. The next transaction is about two-thirds of what you see in this light-green area down here. That, that was a transaction slightly over 8,000 acres, once again, November 1948. Very low purchase price, because the feds, about, I think, $7,100 if I'm not mistaken. But in any event, the feds put so many restrictions on the university's use of the property, it had to be used for agricultural research, hence it was called the Weldon Spring Experimental Research Farm. And that was its name for a substantial period of time. It carried that deed restriction for about a 20-year period, so until 1968, and then after 1968, the university's ability to start using that acreage, that 8,000 acres, expanded. Now, as time went on, and so the 20-year, the 20-year deed restriction goes away in 1968, but as time moves on, another 10 years to about 1977, the state legislature imposes on the university, and certainly Steve Wild, the in-house counsel who handles real estate for the university can address this far better than I can, and Kevin Hoag, who is their director of real estate, may, may as well. But in any event, in 1977, there was a statutory change that called for transactions of the university that dealt with either campus areas or transactions that involved more than 2,500 acres to, that those had to obtain the approval of both houses of the state legislature and the governor's, and the governor's approval. So in 1979, two years later, there actually was the approval of a transaction where the university could convey about 73, 7230 acres of what's in the green, light green down in here. That transaction was approved in May 1979 by both houses of the legislature and by Governor, then Governor Teasdale. And on June the 20th, I think it was, of 1979, the university sold those 7230 acres to the Department of Conservation, $12,400,000. I am sure, and the university may know more than I do, I suspect that money came from the recently enacted sales tax that started to fund the activities of the Department of Conservation. But the Department of Conservation paid $12,400,000 to acquire 7230 acres in this light-green area. And, pardon me, is that, that referred to as a Weldon, Weldon Spring Wildlife area? Yes, it is. It moved from being the Weldon Spring Agricultural Research Farm to being the Weldon Spring Conservation Area. And I think it's important for the public generally, and certainly for the council, to realize you are dealing with different conservation pieces of property. They had their different histories. Bush wildlife had the history I described, and 30 years after Bush wildlife was created, you had this Weldon Spring Conservation Area. Now, that, that transaction took the university, which if you go back to November 1948, the university had acquired right at 8,000 acres. So 73, 7230 of those acres have been sold to the Department of Conservation, so the university's down to a number in the magnitude of 750 acres. Once again, you have, some of the land goes to various road purposes along, then Highway 40, now Interstate 64 and whatnot. So eventually, Missouri Research Park became a much smaller area, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Wild and Mr. Hoag address the, the history of the research park. I would like to make sure there is clarity on one issue, and I think councilmember Cronin will, will, knows a fair amount about this, so he may be able to reinforce some of what I'm about to say. As, as the university, in the life of its ownership of these now 750 acres, got to the early 1990s, they clearly went in the direction that Mr. Hoag described of wanting to figure out what to do with so much acreage. So they, they actually were marketing the research park, and Zoltex's been there 25 years, so you're talking 1993, Zoltex went into business out there. But around that same year, they entered into a lease with an entity called Missouri Golf, Inc., to lease 225 acres. The lease was effective, for some reason, May is a big month for this area here, in May of 1993, a 99-year lease ran, started. It runs until December 31st, 2092. And I actually was myself confused about this, but that is a 99-year ground lease, and it has 75, now probably really 74 more years to go on the ground lease. So I used to hear these numbers of 99 and 75 and think people were, were confused on the numbers, but they do actually relate to each other. The ground lease started in 93, 1993, and it's over in 2092. There has been some change in the involved parties in that ground lease situation, but the university truly owns the 100 and, the 100, that ground lease was for 225 acres between some land that is used for the clubhouse, the parking lot, and the edges of the 385 acres that are before the council. On the extreme eastern edge and on the extreme western edge, there are some long, thin pieces of ground that are not part of the 385-acre application. And so what is the subject of the 385-acre application is 185 of those original golf course 225 acres. Now, I hope I'm not confusing you, and if I am, please ask questions between myself and others in the room, we can give you some accurate information. But because the university owns that, owns that ground, we have, the staff has taken the position that we would very much like to have the university telling us they are comfortable and in fact agree to the imposition of our zoning regime on those 100, on, on all of these acres, but especially those 185 acres. And they, they have done that, so. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
I appreciate the history lesson, and I really do.
Yeah.
While we're talking about history then, what, when did Weldon Spring Heights come about, the township? And how does it relate to the division of, of land here? Was it part of this original tract of ground or, or not?
No, this, this...
It's the white one.
Right there. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, good, good catch, Joe. This, first of all, let me tell you the acreage. According to the county assessor's office, there's 59 total acres in there. About six of it is on two different lots. One lot is their septic area, and another lot sits right at an intersection of two of their internal streets there, and is own, continues to be treated as basically common ground or parkland. So the actual residential use of those 59 acres is on 53 acres. There are 36 residential lots. It was created in about the timeframe of 1949, 1950. Once again, the feds are unloading land, these 59 or 53 acres, whichever number you want to focus on. Those acres had been used for the housing for the officers that the Army had stationed in this area during the days when it was being used in World War II. For example, in the original plat, there's a huge 10-acre parcel that was one, one lot. I think it's now Lot 1 and Lot 32 and 33. I'm confident that was the commanding officer of the post, just, just using my common sense. But long story short, Mike, to answer your question, the feds unload those 59 acres, a lawyer, no Snickers, please, a lawyer in Kansas City acquired that acreage. He then subdivided it. I believe the subdivision plat was recorded, and there's residents here who probably know much more than I do, but I think he recorded that plat the year, the next year, 1950. He put deed restrictions on, on there that are your standard, I mean, they were standard for that period of time. They were perhaps not as sophisticated as the ones we would impose in calendar year 2018, but there are deed restrictions on those 50, 59 acres, those 36 lots. And so they, they, they've been there in, in that configuration since 1950 at least. Now, I'm a little more confused about when they actually started to take on a governmental, institutional complexion to their affairs. I'm not trying to be silly here, but they at one point in time communicated with the county, and we needed to get some verification as to whether or not they had a zoning ordinance, and we've not been provided with one, so I don't know the state of their, their records and so forth. I, I believe one gentleman spoke of them as, as being an incorporated governmental entity, and he's on the Board of Trustees, and so for the moment I accept it face value, there is probably a parallel governmental entity that governs those 59 acres at the same time that the deed restrictions are, are still operating on those 59 acres.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, question.
Yes, go ahead.
Speaking of zoning, because that's what the original subject was, I, I want it to be clear, and the residents out here are aware of it too, that when the university owns the ground, that there's laws in place that they are not subject to county zoning, county building permits, county regulations, okay? Mr. Wild made that very clear in a letter that he sent us, okay? So that might be one of the emphasis, one of the reasons you see Missouri Research Park being still, the land still being owned by the University of Missouri, because we don't control development when it's owned by the University of Missouri. I know that's going to be hard for some of you folks to understand, and I get it too, I don't particularly understand that, but that's not something we can address as a council, that's something that would have to be addressed with your state representatives, both in the House and Senate. So if you don't like that situation, you'd rather see the zoning for this, for this university land come under the auspices of this council, that's something that's, that's beyond us. That's something that had to be dealt with the state legislature. Am I correct in that assessment, sir?
Well, but I would, I would let Steve Wild address that the university has on this application, joined in and consented to the county exercising this zoning jurisdiction on all of the 385 acres, including the 185 golf acres, as well as the 200 residential development acres. Steve, do you want to... Yeah, thank you.
Want to move on to the next question?
Yes.
The next question was...
Hang on, are all the answers going to be this long? I was just curious.
Let me turn my page.
Can we, some of these we should...
Let's bring Mike up, he doesn't talk this long.
Just trying to pace myself, you know?
I, the reason why I came up with these questions, because I did not know the answers to them, and so, because a lot of the emails and, and comments were based on us taking away the Bush, or Weldon Spring, or any kind of public ground or public use, which I would have been adamantly opposed to, and so I wanted to clarify the facts. So do the citizens currently have access to this for recreational use?
Well, I'm going to give you a one-word answer. No.
It's considered, it would be considered trespass, because it's private?
There's, let, let the university officials who have the responsibility for this, their attorney and the director, speak to that. You can't go out there and picnic, you can't, no citizen can go out there unless they get the consent of the owner, which is the university, the curators of the University of Missouri. The citizens currently have no access to this for recreational use.
Okay, so then that leads to the next...
You know, a golfer might hit a slice over onto the...
Leads to the next couple of questions, and so if it's not Bush's wildlife, and it's not conservation or public use, and we want to know how many subdivisions have been built, then if we're strictly talking about zoning, then that's a whole other conversation. So if that's the fact that we conclude, so how many subdivisions have been, you guys were supposed to do some research to see if there are any, any other areas that are restricted?
I have good news, councilman. I have good news, Councilman. Mr. Hurlbert is going to take that answer.
Can you take that board down?
Yeah, sure.
You can put the board against here if you need to show it.
Good evening.
Hi.
How are we doing?
We're on the next slide.
So, in answer to the question, staff did some research, basically kind of using the criteria of subdivisions that are within view of the Katy Trail or the river, Missouri River for the most part, or adjoining the floodplain, I think was kind of how we did it. We found 16 subdivisions along the entire stretch, the bluff line along the Missouri River. Out of the, those 16, three have been completed in the last 15 years. If you add one more year to 2002, there's four. The subdivisions are Wind Castle, Crest Over Katy Trail, Manors at Austin Ridge, and Villas at Whispering Oaks.
Are there restrictions of any kind that you're aware of, from conservation or from any other entities?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you know of any, John? Any other question? I can move to the next question?
Hey, we're on a roll, I don't want to stop you.
All right, which one is the next one?
How many subdivisions have been built in St. Louis County and Franklin County?
St. Louis County and Franklin County have restrictions on the Missouri River Bluff.
So, utilizing the same criteria, view of the river, floodplain, or the railroad in that case over there, there were 34 subdivisions along the, in St. Louis County. I'm not going to go through the list, but we can provide that. Franklin County is a different animal. They had, they included, told us, the staff over there, that there is 102 subdivisions along the bluff line. However, they count single lot development as a subdivision. So, we really don't know exactly how many that is.
So, a house there could be counted as a subdivision?
That's a subdivision.
Probably like lability or something like that, I would assume.
So, I mean, that, the number is kind of all over the place there, but there's a number of homes or developments along there.
And then the other questions that were arise is the, on the zoning, on the lot size. The lot sizes and that zoning, we've, it's bounced back and forth on the appropriate size. There is water and sewer there, so it's not a five-acre minimum like we have in the county that we stick to.
Next slide, Jim. Thanks.
So, when you have common ground, and we refer to other subdivisions, not common ground, sorry, golf courses, is that part of the acreage for the average in a complex?
So, for the example of Whitmore?
Whitmore's the example, yeah. That's the closest one I could think of, yeah.
Yeah, it is. The lots, the overall density includes the golf course, the two golf courses.
So, when this subdivision was the, was a golf course part of the average, is it considered part of the acreage average?
For Whitmore, yes.
No, and this one that we're discussing, is it part of the average?
Yes.
And so, that would, what does that equate to? Did you say one acre or 1.1, or do we have an average on that?
1.7. 1.7, yeah.
I'm sorry?
I think it was like 1.87.
Just under one.
Mr. Gosse has those numbers, I believe.
We calculated 1.78, I think the staff calculated 1.87, it depends on, it's under one.
Under one. Next question, Mr. Chair.
Okay, yeah, next question. Are there other golf courses, community developments, do they allow, oh no, we're on, I'm on the, trying to go through this.
No, no, you were good, he was catching up with you.
Oh, I might catch on.
Next one, Jim.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask Robert Myers to join me, because he did some of this research as well.
Well, what I just want to make it clear is, I want to see if we're following the acreage lot size. I mean, if we're just moving on to zoning, then we got to talk about the zoning. If it's not an intrusion on the Katy Trail legally, if it's not an intrusion on Bush's Wildlife legally, then we need to discuss the planning, zoning of the land. So, Robert, on, if this is your question?
Sure.
When we do a PUD such as this, or any other PUD, not so much as this one, because we should use it, how we treat everybody else and whatever the ordinances are, are we, do we allow golf courses and common ground, do we add that in the whole parcel for the average lot size?
Yes, and that's going strictly step by step by the calculation procedures that are in our ordinance. So, following that strictly, we did include common ground, except for common ground, which includes detention basins, and it also excludes, the calculations exclude right-of-way or future right-of-way, but it did include the golf course, and that's typical.
It did or did not?
Did, yeah. That's typical.
Anybody have any questions on this one? No? All right, then the next one is, that's the common ground, you just said that, does the county allow common ground to be part of the average lot size, and you said yes or no?
Yes. Yes, except for detention basins.
Why, and then, from what I understand, the staff approved this application. What's, on the basis, what was your basis of approval for this?
Recommended approval.
Recommended approval, I'm sorry, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I guess in a nutshell, it's a unique development for a unique site, and we see it as an extension of the research park. So, all within one area, and kind of as a package in a way, you have jobs, recreation, and housing altogether in close enough proximity that it's, again, it's, can be considered one package. One of the benefits of planning is that if you have different land uses in close enough proximity, you can cut down on commuting, and you can cut down on traffic. So, I like to think of traffic as an imbalance between jobs and housing, but in this case, you have an opportunity for all three in close enough proximity together, but also some protections for those. Third, we felt that this, this development has a lower environmental footprint than a typical 360, 362 dwelling development like this. It has a lower environmental footprint. And then, finally, I'd say that we feel like it meets the intent of the master plan, and what I mean by that is, the master plan in terms of the overall land uses, it shows parks and open space, and it, the text for that land use category specifically lists golf courses. And we feel like because of the golf course component, the residences are actually organized around the golf course. The golf courses are organizing principle for this, for this development. I would also say that planning and developments, in my mind, because they involve different land uses, you'll never really find a planning development that completely necessarily, completely conforms to a master plan. I'll give you an example. If you look at the master plan for St. Charles City, what was Noah's Ark site out here at the interstate and Missouri River, that was shown in the master plan as commercial. So, when the Streets of St. Charles came forward, I suppose someone could have said, which is a mixed use development, I suppose someone could have said, well, that's a mixed unit development, includes residential, our master plan shows commercial, so we can't approve this development because it includes residential. But again, planning developments are mixed uses, so that's, that's one of the considerations that we had.
Got some questions still, is that okay?
You have one more, and then you're all done.
Well, I was going to ask questions on this question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I have questions to staff when we're ready.
On the tree preservation ordinance that we have, how are they following that tree preservation ordinance, as far as the trees that they're not destroying?
Tree preservation ordinance, so, St. Charles County has a tree preservation ordinance where all residential subdivisions must retain a minimum percentage of tree canopy, and so, the focus is on tree canopy. So, this development would be far and away above the minimum standard for tree preservation or tree canopy preservation technically.
What's the percentage, do you know? Is there a percentage given?
There is, I could get that too. It depends on several factors, but one of the considerations is, I think, at least 25% of the tree canopy.
Okay, and then, if, if this didn't pass, if this subdivision, it doesn't, it fails, what would they, what would the University of Missouri or whomever be able to continue doing with that property?
Right now, it's zoned agricultural, so they could...
But I mean, is it right now, though, either they're building, they could build factories or use it for industrial, is that what it's zoned for, is that what, that's what they're using for now?
No, it's zoned agricultural.
But they add on, would they add on to it?
A couple of things. First, it's owned by the university, so...
So, they'd have to add, okay, I got you.
They have certain abilities to use that property in the way that they want to or choose to, under the state, state charter, et cetera.
Okay, I got you.
But if it were, it went into private hands, the agricultural zoning would apply. Your question is about under existing, and so, things like a single-family residential subdivisions would be allowed for, by right, at five-acre minimum. Golf courses are allowed by right in agricultural zoning districts and in all residential zoning districts, and there's any number of agricultural and other uses that would be allowed by right.
Okay.
Last question?
Go ahead.
I have just a question and comment to staff, okay? The county, one of the reasons you, staff recommended this is because they said it complied with your interpretation of master plan, okay? I was on that master plan committee that wrote the master plan, my name's in this book, and I can tell you that when we designated something called parks and open space, we designated the parks and open space to be parks and open space. So, I just want to make that, make that clear, as a member of the committee that wrote that book, parks and open space to us isn't, to me, 360 homes surrounding a golf course, okay? Even though a golf course may be considered parks and open space, the subdivision surrounding it, I don't consider that, okay? Secondly, is, I got my old copy of the UDO out, just to, from my planning zoning days, just to, just to refresh myself a little bit, and section 405.077, it clearly states that, that the zoning district map shall be in accordance with the master plan for the St. Charles County adopted by the county council. So, any changes, adoptions, or amendments are supposed to comply to that book, okay? According to our own UDO, okay? So, Mr. Hazelwood, you can welcome to, before now, the next meeting, weigh in on that, but it states on our plans that we, that we need to comply with the master plan, correct?
Yes, although I think the law would say that you, as a legislative body, have the ability, as you deal with a particular application like this, or in the future, some other situation, and I suspect we could find several of them in the course of the history of land use law in St. Charles County, where there has been something done that was different than what the vision had been at the time that a master plan was...
I get that, but the oath I took, you know, was to uphold the charter and the laws of this county, and the UDO, which is part of the laws of this county, states that any amendment we make to the zoning map is supposed to be in accordance to that document called the master plan.
Yeah.
And I guess my interpretation of that plan and yours are different, okay?
Well, you, I'm not trying to be contentious with you in the least, but you can imagine that that master plan cannot cement into the next 10 years after it's adopted, all of the events that are going to occur in human activity. So, I think the law is pretty, is more flexible than our section 405.077 might indicate.
Any other questions for staff?
I just had the last question, but this more, we could just, we could not necessarily get into this, this, there were concerns on the planned zoning tape that there, are there, there weren't any sidewalks, or did they add sidewalks and curb and gutter? That might be a non-issue right now.
They added sidewalks in the new plan.
Okay, so that's pretty much the basic questions, was mostly based around Bush's Wildlife and the, and the use of the property, but from here on, everything else is just, I guess, discussion on the zoning and whether or not it's a good fit for the area. I, go ahead.
Me?
I...
Dave, my turn?
Any other questions to staff?
I do. One of the big parts that you're, one of the big duties that your department is in charge of is, as I see it anyway, is trying to mitigate or reduce potential conflicts that happen, and I have concerns about building homes close to industrial, that just, it's something that we do, and then it causes problems, and so, do you think that this plan has houses that are in too close a proximity, not all of them, obviously, it's a big development, but, you know, are some of the homes too close to Zoltak in particular?
Staff report spoke to that, that there's concern about the proximity of that in relationship to the adjoining uses, so, yes.
I guess the real question is...
Do you think we should eliminate some of the lots as, as one of the conditions to the, to our approval? Do you think it would be a good idea to eliminate some of the lots that are close to Zoltak or to the sewage treatment plant?
That's your call. I would say this, that we...
I'm asking for your advice, you do this in a, you're a professional.
I would say that we recommended that to the applicant, so, I mean, that was our suggestion, but that's...
My question is, under our current zoning laws, is, do they meet a setback for, will those homes meet a setback for industrial property?
Yeah, Mike, would you...
Do you understand?
You're talking about the buffer?
Yes.
Yes, that's supposedly yes, that's what, they're providing enough room to be able to do that.
Okay, so it would meet our current zoning regulations as far as...
Providing for the buffer.
Between industrial and residential.
But as a PUD, they have flexibility in the setbacks of where they can locate the house, so that provides that room to do that.
I understand that, yeah.
Didn't, does Zoltak back up to Weldon Spring Heights?
Yes.
So, I'm confused, because Weldon Spring Heights was there in 1950, and Zoltak said that their property isn't congruent to a residential neighborhood, but yet they built their factory behind, next to a residential property, so I don't see how, that's kind of a hypocritical thing to say, but I think that, I'd like to know what the buffers are. You guys got a kind of a plot plan where the tree lines and the buffers and the sites, the site distances and all that stuff is compared to the Katy Trail? Would you guys have, not you guys, you don't have that, do you? Do you guys have that, one of you guys?
You know how far away we are. You mean the buffers there?
Like, like a plot plan that shows where the Katy Trail is, and can, can we see something so we can talk about the interference with the Katy Trail and the site distances and all that stuff that a lot of people are talking about?
Yeah.
Is that all right? Is that on this plane?
Can you be able to get on the screen?
If I could.
Is that on this here?
It's in this, it's in these materials, I can show you where is these materials, but I also, okay, great. Before we do that, before, before you come up, Brad, I had some questions for the University of Missouri, why they're here, and also Zoltak. So, if I could, I'd ask some representative from the university to come up.
You want legal or you want real estate?
Either one, whichever one feels comfortable asking, answering my questions.
It's going to depend on the question, I guess.
Yeah, I can always defer.
Are we moving away from proximity to the commercial right now, or?
No, I want to, I want to come back to that, but I wanted, why these gentlemen are here, I know they're busy people, and I just had some questions, I thought it'd be a good opportunity to ask those, because some of this conversation has come up that, and you had mentioned that the University of Missouri is going to sell this property. Is that, is that a definite?
That is the intent of the university, is to sell this property or otherwise develop it.
You wouldn't consider donating it to, like, the county, would you?
No.
Okay, considering that, so something's going in there, and I guess the question is, is it going to be this subdivision? is, is it going to be this subdivision, is it going to be, is it going to be industrial use, or what is it going to be? I have no clue, but, so, it's, it's not going to be donated to the county for parkland, so, my question, the next question is, when, when you consider some of the tenants in this property, and I guess, number one, Zultec, do they actually buy the property, or are they leasing that property?
I believe Zultec owns their property, and they can confirm that, but I believe they own...
Okay, but a lot of these properties are leased, are they still leased, or have you transferred them?
Not a lot, some, there's, there are a few that remain on their initial ground lease, many have converted to fee ownership of their ground.
Yeah, so when they were leased, they really didn't pay any taxes to the county because they were leased ground of the university, is that correct?
There's a period of history where that was the fact pattern, and then that changed, and I don't know the exact date of that change in taxing status.
Okay.
Eventually, your council could advise on that.
Does anybody else have a question?
Yes, sir. I just would like to know, did the university market this property to any civic organizations like the St. Lo Zoo, University of Missouri Conservation Department, you know, Missouri Department of Natural Resources, or anybody that would, besides a private developer?
I can't speak to what occurred before I was involved with the project. To my knowledge, it was pursued for private development, not in conjunction with another public entity such as those.
So like the St. Lo Zoo, just above ground in North County, but nobody talked to the zoo, or Missouri Department of Conservation, if they had an interest in property at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I think that's unfortunate, and I also like to correct you, this thing that you sent the university's rationale for sale?
Sure.
It says this is a harmonious residential development, I think the people out there were attested, this isn't very harmonious, okay?
Any other questions for the University of Missouri? Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Oh, there was one other thing.
Sure.
I, what I understood, when they, this developed as a research park, I kind of expected it to be a research park, not a, not a, not a manufacturing park, and I think we have, you know, a couple of companies in there that do more manufacturing than they do research, so it's, it's definitely more of an industrial than I would consider research, so I don't know why you accepted them as tenants, or was there any criteria for those companies coming in there?
So I think that, kind of to that point, as ownership interests transferred to fee and out of ground leases, some of the university's ability to dictate around those uses and who came in and who didn't, transitioned from rights under ground lease to rights under protective covenants, whereby we are one vested interest in the park, but all tenants in the park are vested under those same covenants, and so I think our ability to control in the same way, in fee simple ownership to lease hold ownership, has really changed the dynamic around how those property interests changed hands, and what influence and impact we had. That being said, much of our mission at the research park is economic development related in addition to research, and many of those companies that are there are very positive from an economic development standpoint for this region and that research park, despite their focus being something other than research. So I think it's a balance of things, one, that many of those companies allow us to continue to support our economic development mission, but also that we have encouraged and continue to try to participate in relationships with research that has kind of brought that into the region and the county as well.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any other questions?
I was curious, I think I understand the answer to this, but I want to be clear, this piece of ground has not been sold yet, it's contingent upon the approval of this, is that correct?
So this piece of ground is under contract for sale, a closing contingency of that sale is that they have approval of St. Charles County for their plan, and that approval and plan conforms with the requirements of our purchase agreement.
So let's just say, for the sake of argument, that it's not approved, then this sale would not go through to this particular buyer, and you would have to find a different buyer, is that fair to say?
I would not say that that's the exact fact pattern, what I would say is that...
Is it pretty close to the fact pattern?
So, so the differentiation I would make is that we would not be able to close this transaction under the current contract we have, we would either have to, A, go back with this group and see if there's an alternative plan that can achieve the project in mind, or pursue alternatives, either in private, public, or otherwise, for disposition or development of this ground.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much. No other questions for the gentleman, these gentlemen, thank you.
I feel like we should ask a legal question, you walked all the way up here.
I'll just say it.
There you go.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Are we going back to Mr. Goss and the...
I had some questions for gentlemen representing Zultec. Yeah, I guess, I was kind of confused, and I'm not sure how this all transpired, that you all purchased that land from the University of Missouri, so you currently own your property, and would they come back before, now that it's, would it come back before planning and zoning, or the council, or is it, is it currently a use that is already protected under the state of the law? Well, is it Nike that did the expansion? Yeah, I mean, I, as you may recall, Mr. Chairman, just in the last 12 months, another industrial fee owner who has a lot out there, Nike, came in and did work with the county on the expansion of their plant, so I, I think that I would answer the question, as I understood you to say, Zultec would have to do the same thing if they came in to... Only, only if they planned to expand their current operations. Yeah, I mean, if they're going to stay, stay as they are right now, they're, they're, they have their land use entitlements right now. Yeah, I guess my question to you, do you have any plans to expand your current operation?
I am personally not aware of any plans, if they have any, if I could, I, you know, address the issue of research in the research park, and I unfortunately ran out of time earlier to do this, but carbon fiber is a high-tech operation. One of the offshoots of the product development that Zultec did in its carbon fiber work at the plant at Missouri Research Park was the development of new technology which has applications in the wind turbine manufacturing, you know, the wind turbines for the windmills, I mean, they're wider than what this room are, and as a result of the research activities which happened at the facility at Missouri Research Park, Zultec opened a second facility in St. Charles County out in St. Peters. It's on Gunther Drive, off old Salt Lake Road, in the St. Peters Industrial Park, employs 200 people, so, again, this is, the nature of their business, it's constantly evolving, constantly developing, and they've added significantly to the tax base in St. Charles County.
Well, and, and I think we all appreciate that, and I guess, carbon fiber's been around since 1975, I think, is when they first started manufacturing carbon fiber, so it's, it's not new, but I guess there's newer technology that comes out each day. I'd be interested if, if the company would offer a tour to the council, come out and look at their...
Sure, I've had discussions with the company representatives, and we'll be glad to make arrangements and invite, you know, the chairman and anyone else who'd like to come out, take a tour.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of this gentleman?
I didn't wait for the tour, okay? I drove out there Saturday, K T, to the plant, I saw a sign out in the lot, no trespass, all trespassers need to knock on the front, or check in with the receptionist, so I went to the front door, nobody answered, so I took the Liberty Drive around. That plant is surrounded by mature woods, over on the left corners, you're facing the building, there's a cell phone tower, there were six right deer on there, that toll side of that hill's tore up with deer, so I guess the point I'm trying to make is, that's a real mature forest that surrounds them, and it's pretty harmonious with the, with the wildlife that are in that area. I thought it was a real clean-looking plant, everything looked good, I didn't see anything that would have, I would object to if it was in my backyard, to be frank with you. I know you have concerns about the development and stuff, but I just think it's, by looking at it and touring, which you could see on the outside, and I drove the whole perimeter, you know, it's, it's a very nice facility that's very well maintained, and I think you guys are good corporate citizens because you create a lot of jobs in this county.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, if we could have Mr. Goss and come forward.
You had a question about what was around us and our proximity to the Katy Trail, I believe, and let me try and get a slide that'll show you that. Those are just subdivisions along Katy Trail, this is an elevation slide that we did, the darker colors, higher the elevations, so the blue and the pink, purple are the highest, and then the red and orange are the lowest, and the green in between, those are in 40-foot segments, so if you were to look at, thanks Doug, if you were to look at the Katy Trail, this is the, the southern part of our site, looking out onto the Missouri River, the Katy Trail is 685 feet away from the eastern part of our site, that's basically three, three football fields by the time you get to any houses, because the houses are behind another hill, so they'll be masked by the hill. We have the research park ground between us and the development itself, it's a triangular swath of ground, and it's the, that swath of ground which overlooks actually the Katy Trail, that's not our property, and as you move from east to west, you can see it, it's 185, 155 feet in that one area, because there's a notch of land that sticks out from the development, that property will not be developed, it has, it's deed restricted, no dwellings are allowed on there, it's Department of Conservation placed that deed restriction on it, so we had shown some houses on, or lots on that land, we took them out because of that deed restriction, and then...
So who, who has access to that land?
Well, we, we have access to it, we are acquiring it, but it'll just be green space, it will not have any homes on it.
Is that part of the bluff that some people talk about going out there and looking off of, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
How many acres is that triangle right there?
Oh, golly, Doug, what'd you say? I guess it's at least 15 or 20?
Probably more.
Yeah, it's more, because you know that one's 11, it's got to be about 30, 35 is actually what I'm thinking is, I haven't, I haven't, I know what the acreage on the east is, that it's a buffer, that's not part of a development, that's 11 acres over there, so if I were to go back...
How low is the Katy Trail from that point there?
Four stories, this is the, this is the highway looking to the east, and that's what you see, you don't see our development, our development's behind that hill, you absolutely, you're not going to see this development coming into St. Charles County, it's impossible. This is the, looking from the bottom of the Katy Trail, looking up, the trees are put to scale, our houses will be below that hill over on the left, so we're going to be masked, and that is what the hill looks like, you know, I'm standing below it, and then this is the picture from the Katy Trail, it's 140-foot drop from the, from the property line of the Katy Trail, and there is conservation ground between us and the Katy Trail property, so we do not abut the Katy Trail, and even if we did, it would have been 140 feet below us, so we're just not going to have any impact on the Katy Trail. If you're leaning out over the edge, that's what it looks like below, that's actually Department of Conservation ground that I'm standing on, why I took that picture.
Is that accessible from, to the public?
No, no, so this is...
I didn't think so.
No, it's not, this isn't something that people are, you know, are enjoying, and, you know, they're losing the benefit of because of this development, that's just not true. So...
So how much, from Highway 40, what's that, is there, is that all common ground on the, yeah, that one?
Yeah, that, that area is about 11 acres, and we are, we've set that aside, that will not be developed at all, and again, that is, it's a big hill, it's between us and Highway 40, and that's why that picture that I showed you, oh, this is, this is the cutaway, the elevation, over on the right is the Highway 40, and that's that hill, it's between 40 and the development, houses are below on the other side, and you can see where the proposed road is on the far left side of the screen, and so that is the hill that you're seeing in this cutaway, which is why I know it's not going to be visible, this is, I know, I, I've heard concerns being expressed, this is going to mar the view of people driving into St. Charles County and change their perception of St. Charles County, because they will see houses there, that simply isn't true, they can't.
So in your, your opinion, if, if I'm on the Katy Trail, will I see, visually see any homes in your development?
I don't see how you're going to, honestly, because literally, we're 140 feet above you, and the angle is such, plus there's a hill, and then we drop out, we're kind of like in a high, and then there's a bowl, so that purple area is the high area, and then there's all the trees there between us and the Katy Trail as well, so even on the right-hand side, you know, the cross-section I showed you there, I don't see how you're going to see houses.
What's that elevation on the blue, like from the, does it go up 10 feet? No, no, each, each level on the, on the typo?
Do you know, Doug?
10 or 20?
Hang on one second.
And while you're looking for that, that bump out, I do remember at one time, you had houses plotted on that...
We did.
...bluff, right?
Yep.
Right, so you removed those?
We did, yes.
At that request of the planned zoning, or just...
No, that was because we found out there was a deed restriction on the property, we were not made aware of that earlier, and when we did our title search, you know, we had been hearing there might, there was one, we just, but our title search hadn't shown it, so we asked the title company to go back and look again, and tell us, you know, is that out there, and it was, and so, fine, took them out.
Yeah, I've, no, I've ridden my bike up and down that part of the trail, and I, so I know how high those bluffs are there, and I was, I was surprised when people were saying you could see houses up there, I think the most intrusive thing that I've seen down in that part of the trail is the bridges, from underneath, that's...
That's what you would see, it's about, I've ridden as well, it's about 600 feet, Joe.
Is, okay, is it, is the common ground part of the equa, is that, that 30 plus 10, or whatever it is, 30 plus 15, is that part of the common ground equation?
No, no, because we didn't include our development, we carved it out, and we did the same thing over on the west, this strip there, that's where the spur trail is, we took that out of our development, it was never intended to be part of the development, but the, the original legal description had included it, because that was the legal description that had been furnished, connection with the transaction, and so when we realized that that included that, it's about 10.7 acres, we made sure we modified the legal description, took it out, it's not part of the project.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yeah, we also added additional conservation area next to it, we have a non-disturbance area all along the west that, and then we also, addition to that non-disturbance area in the northwest corner, we gave Zultec a drainage easement, because Zultec runs their stormwater over our property, so we thought, well, the neighborly thing to do would be to give them a drainage easement, so that's what we did.
So this, this spur, spur trail?
Mm-hmm.
Would be near the backyards of these homes?
No, because the, the yards themselves, let me see if I can give you a picture of that. The, we're up on the ridge and below, and so the pictures that I would show you, I'm going to find them, it's pretty heavily wooded, and, yeah, that's, that's what it would look like from Duckett Creek, that's what it would look like along the Duckett Creek Road, so, and, you know, that's, that's what Duckett Creek looks at, I took that picture from Duckett Creek, so it's, you know, it's just heavily wooded, you just don't see it, and... And the same thing with respect to the road down to the spur trail. This is the Duckett Creek Road that leads down to it.
John, is the development, are the roads mostly on the ridges and the houses hang off the ridge?
That'd be correct, yes. And we've, and in order to minimize impact on the land, we've pulled the front yard setbacks up, so that if the house is fifteen feet from the road. However, if there's a front entry garage, we push that garage back twenty-five feet to ensure that we have at least four parking spaces per home. So if it's a side-entry garage, you know, courtyard entry, we don't need to do that. But we want to make sure that two cars can be in the driveway, two cars can be in the garage. So in case where it's a front entry, we're pulling that home back.
And the one gentleman from your group said there would not be any yards? Grass, grassy yards?
No, really, it's native plantings is what we're doing. I mean, one of the things that we listened to in these proceedings, one gentleman got up from, who was concerned about our development, and talked about how this land was all dead. I think he used the phrase "dead," that it was covered with honeysuckle and invasive species, and, you know, you couldn't restore it. And I thought, well, I don't buy that. So I wouldn't, you know, the Audubon Society actually has a program called Bringing Nature Home, which, we looked at that program, and that's why we came up with the restrictive covenants that we came up with, the conservation covenants, to try and encourage that transformation of this ground. That's why Chuck Caverly talked about this being a stewardship, conservation development. That's why we've engaged Chuck and Native Landscape Solutions, because that's what they do. They take property that's been degraded and pre-native plantings, and something that creates biodiversity, which is what the goal is here. There's a guy, a biologist named Doug Talamie, who, his book is Bringing Nature Home as well, and he talks about, that's how we're going to bring back songbirds in this country. That's how we're gonna bring back wildlife, is because we're gonna have to do that with our yards and not have, you know, turf. We need native plants, and we need to do those kinds of things. That's what the neighborhood architect is also there to do, working with Chuck, just to make sure that the houses are positioned on these lots in the proper way, so that it's less destructive. And then Chuck's gonna be working with them to assure that what they do with their improvements is environmentally friendly, and that we're, you know, and part of that, too, I'm sorry, I'm kinda going off on this, but we also are going to have an educational component to this, because, and you can laugh if you want, but I'm telling you, it doesn't work if you don't teach people why you're doing it. And so one of the things that we are going to do with Missouri Bluffs Clubhouse is have periodic meetings of the association and bring in people who know things about this sort of stuff, biodiversity and native plantings, and why you do that, and explain it. Because if you do that, people will buy into it. But they've gotta understand why you're, why you're doing it. Otherwise, you just feel like you're telling them what to do. But they could get kinda excited if you do it the right way, and we think we will. And that's the whole idea behind this.
Okay, that was a long answer for a short question.
Sorry.
But thank you.
Yes, please.
Mr. Goss, I'd first like to thank you for giving us lots and lots of information. And be make yourself available. You did a fine job. But that being said, I still have some, some questions about some stuff that's been stated. In your P&amp;Z testimony before the planning and zoning, I actually read the six hundred pages that were in the packet last night. That's why I have the bags under the eyes that I have. But anyway, you state right in here that clearcutting and grading are not part of the plan. That was what your testimony was to planning and zoning. But I heard the botanist, I mean, I believe Chuck's saying that he was gonna be reseeding sixty acres of ground. I heard counties states somewhere like twenty-five percent of the trees are gonna go. And outside the golf course, I also went to the golf course. I went to the clubhouse you're talking about. I talked to some of the members of the, of the golf club, looked at the woods around there. I mean, this property outside of the golf course is pretty much all wooded, okay? So, I mean, I don't see any way you can, you can put a subdivision in without doing some grading and some, and some clearcutting. And from, if you're planning sixty acres, I'm gonna assume that you're taking sixty acres of trees out of there. So that being said, I would like, between now and the next meeting, just an idea from staff or yourself about how many acres of trees are we really taking down out there?
I think I've already given you that information, Councilman Cronin, and I'm looking in my, in the materials, so I can get to the picture quickly for you.
And if the quote that they attribute to you is wrong, then maybe we need to correct it. It's on page fifteen oh three.
I don't, no. You know, look, obviously, we are going to have to cut some trees down. We've gotta put the roads in. I mean, and, you know, what, what we've talked about consistently with this project is we're putting the roads in on the ridges. We're doing that so that we minimize the grading. But obviously, you're gonna have to cut some trees down. You're gonna have to do some grading. But the whole idea behind this is to work with the land and not do what you would do with a typical tract subdivision, which I've done a lot, where you really level the land out. You take the high portions of the ground, and you push them into where the low portions are. We won't be doing that. That's what we will not be doing.
I would advise any of the council members, if they wanna know anything about the state of the forest around this, go out to that golf course and take a look around the edges of it and see what you see.
I've, I've played golf there several times, so I know those trees, and I know if you had a golf ball up there, you best not even go up and try and get it, so...
There's lots of chiggers in there, I can tell you that, 'cause you're not a wise golfer.
Unless it rolls back down.
That's right.
But in all fairness to the proposed builder and developer, the Whittaker family has been building premier homes in this county for nearly forty years, and I can't think of one development that they have done in this county that wasn't first-class. So I think that's, that should be known, that this is a very reputable family company that's been around St. Charles for forty years.
And Councilman Cronin, if you look at that exhibit, that answers your question. The purple area is the area where there are existing trees that'll be removed. The green is the area where existing trees will remain. So there's a hundred-and-ninety-five acres of trees that are remaining. There's forty-eight acres of trees that are being removed. The orange or tan area is the golf course. So roughly twenty-five percent is what's...
Forty-eight acres of trees gone, though, right?
Yeah, that's what we're removing, roughly twenty-five percent. And under the county standards, that is, for development, is remarkably low. I mean, but, you know, that's...
But I come from St. Paul, and I wrote a tree ordinances when I was a councilman out there. We preserve fifty percent out there. So just so you know, that may be low by county standards, but that's not low by some of the other communities in this...
Well, and I, obviously, I recognize that and agree with that. So I preserve seventy-five percent.
Do you have trees out there? I thought it was all farm land. Any other questions? No more questions for them. I'd like to ask Mr. Burkhardt to come up and ask him. Now that you've heard the proposal and seen it, and it was discussed more in depth, would your organization ever consider endorsing a development like this, or do you just not want any development on the ridge at all?
As I mentioned in my prepared comments, I think that the University of Missouri has the capability to come up with a much more sustainable and acceptable plan. They've got a nationally-recognized School of Natural Resources, and they talk a lot about sustainability and conserving our countryside. And I think they can come up with a plan that would be acceptable. But what I've heard tonight is, it's, it's hard to listen to, because it's purely a case of greenwashing, a term for, that I'm sure most of you are familiar with, when you do a development project and you cloak it with conservation terms. And in no sense does this project enhance or even remotely conserve the area. When you, when you hear the description, a fifteen-foot setback for a house, that's about from me to you, maybe a little farther. I mean, think of what kind of a project this will look like in a wooded area. And I, I think that probably there are types of development that could be acceptable here, but certainly not three-hundred-and-fifty homes with two miles of road on this small bit of land.
That's all my questions.
I got a question, Dan. Thanks for coming. Appreciate your enthusiasm and what you do. The county's intentions, and certainly my intentions, are always to preserve the area as best we can. We've done a lot of good ordinances, some of the first ordinances in the state of Missouri, on some of the things we did on environmental protection. But this instance is something that baffles me a little bit, and it's, a lot of the letters we were getting was a false narrative. And so what we wanted to do is find out what the actual facts are. And the Bush, being the Bush, a lot of people saying it's Bush's wildlife, and it's this and that, which it's not. So what we really gotta deal with, what this council has to deal with, is, is it the proper piece to zone, what they're asking for? And you got people that own property, as the University of Missouri does, they still have, they have land rights, too. They can't make their, their ground unusable or unsalable, or make it at zero value. So this council has to look at the law, too. It certainly can't really be based on emotion. So it puts us in a trick bag. So, you know, I, I don't know, when I first, when this first came down the path, it was, oh, no, this, this is a bad deal. But then you start looking at everything else, you gotta ponder the questions, you know? So I don't know, like every, half the people in this room I know, and I, and I appreciate everything you guys do, but I, I'm concerned that the argument wasn't on point for interference with the Katy Trail and interference with Bush's wildlife. And so that's what the perplexing place that we're, that I'm in right now, is trying to figure out what the right thing to do is. Not, not based on emotion or what people don't wanna see because of, I don't wanna see any development in this area. And this council has been one of the strongest holding councils. We made it from three-acre to five-acre minimums. We grew our parks to three thousand acres. We preserved the Daniel Boone home. Everything we do, we got a string bank protection ordinance, we got a tree ordinance, we've got more ordinances than St. Louis County on environmental issues ever had. And so we just gotta figure out what's reasonable, you know? And so that's the thing I'm dealing with, is what is the reasonable thing to do that's fair to all parties? And so if Magnificent Missouri Group and some of the other folks I know out here are opposed to it because, but they don't give, like, if we had a solid legal situation, it would be a no-brainer. But this really puts into a very perplexing decision for, for me. And so I'm just pointing that out. I'm, I always put my stuff right on the table and let you know what I'm thinking. So I'm, I'm concerned that the evidence provided, or the, one of the people who are opposed to this, haven't given us, besides emotional reasons, more legal reasons.
I can't speak to the legal reasons. We retained a lawyer who you've heard from, our planning and zoning heard from at length in, in the hearings they had. But I can tell you that this area is unique in, in the United States. The area west of Highway forty, along Highway ninety-four, has never had dense suburban development. It's got scattered developments, large lots. It's never had anything like a three-hundred-and-fifty-house subdivision on a hundred-and-sixty acres. The area west of Highway forty through Bush, Weldon Spring, out to the Daniel Boone home has been sacrosanct. It's been preserved. And my point to this council, because I know you've had a great record on conservation and green space, is that this area has more value as a conservation corridor through projects like the German Heritage Corridor and all the many good reasons to go out to Missouri wine country. It has more value as a lifestyle choice, as a tourism destination, without intrusive, dense suburban development. And I realize what you grapple with, and it isn't, should there be development? Of course there should be development. It's where should there be development? And we would suggest that this area is not the place for it. And we have no problem, and I certainly appreciate what was said about the developer. And it isn't the developer. The developer, we think, is, is a fine, upstanding part of St. Charles County. It's just that this location is highly problematic. It's steep, it's forested, it's got many difficulties, and putting this number of houses on it will degrade it. It will degrade the connector trail that Great Rivers Greenway put into the Katy Trail. It will create noise pollution and all that goes with residential development. So that, that's something we have to...
I wanna, I wanna clarify something Mr. Browsell said, okay? It's not our intent to make the University of Missouri's land useless, okay? Okay? That's not the intent at all. Under our current ordinances right now, okay? If the Whittaker family bought this, they can build houses on this property, the five-acre lots. And if they don't think five-acre lots will sell in this county, on my little Saturday drive, I went over on Wolfrem Road, and there are multimillion-dollar homes on five-acre large lots right across the highway. So I, I get that this, this land, I would like to see this land, of course, into St. Louis Zoo's hands or Missouri Department of Conservation's, or something like that for conservation purposes, but that's not possible, because the university doesn't wanna sell to those type of organizations, and they don't offer to sell to those organizations. Our current ordinances do allow for development of that property at five-acre lots. And I mean, and we've been pretty consistent in your, in your district, and I've heard you argue really hard for five-acre lots in a lot of places in your district. I don't know why this would be any different than the rest of your district. This was wine country, and it was a subdivision. You'd be insisting on five-acre lots.
Well, I think... There's a lot, there's a lot of reasons for five-acre lots, and I don't think just the open ground is part of it.
No, no, let's, let's be clear here. The five-acre lot is a hot size. It was three acres, we changed it to five. It's when it's septic tanks, when there's sewage, you allow, you afford them the ability to have the less dense. That's the law. So I'm just, I'm just stating a fact. I don't disagree with a lot of things you said there, but it's the, it's the utilities that you have available.
But yeah, we did just turn down, just a couple of months ago, in your district.
Septic tank, septic tank and well.
A guy who wanted to put in three to five-acre lots, and you wouldn't let him put in three. You said he had to put in five.
That is correct.
That you wouldn't go any lower than that.
That's my point. We preserve ground out here, but this is on Highway forty, and it's got water and sewer.
Any other comments?
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I lost my agenda. Is there, is there any other questions regarding this application at this time?
No.
No.
No. Get back on track. My computer went to sleep.
Hearing none.
It's on overtime.
Let's move on to the next bill for introduction, Bill forty-five eighty-two...
Eighty-one.
Bill number forty-five eighty-one, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by John White.
An ordinance pending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R-1A, single-family residential district, one-acre minimum lot size, to R-1D, single-family residential district, ten-thousand-square-foot minimum lot size, as application RZ eighteen dash zero four.
Yeah, but see, I mean, my record proves our... What's to say? We'll hold off just a moment here while some of the crowd peers out so we can hear.
While we're holding off, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say hello to Betty Yan Kramer out there.
Yes, I would, too.
Okay? Private citizen, retired citizen, Betty Yan Kramer?
I love her.
Okay?
However, I'll be back in the next meeting.
Okay, okay. We like seeing your smiling face.
You're sleeping out with the baby?
I can't hear you, come forward, please.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Just want to hand that off to you.
Any comments or questions on Bill 4581?
No.
Hearing none, let's move on to Bill 4582.
Bill number 4582, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Cronin. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A, agricultural district, to RR, single-family residential district, as per application RZ 18-05.
Any comments or questions?
Joe Pruitt, I don't think is here tonight. I know him. Oh, are you? Okay. I know your family pretty well, there's, to my knowledge, no controversy for this. I think they own seven acres and they want to probably split three off, and you're going to build a home there, I bet you. Okay? So you tell your father, father-in-law?
Yeah, father-in-law.
You know, I don't realize he's that old because I just remember kicking him out of Harvey Fisher out of Duckwines when he was a little bitty boy. So, okay, anyway, you tell him I said hello and, and, you know, I hope that you guys are successful out there.
I'll remind Mr. Cronin in the late hour that we have.
Sorry.
No other comments? Let's move on to Bill 4583, I hope that's right.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
Right.
We just did 4583.
Bill number 4584, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by John White. An ordinance accepting plans and specifications, ordering the improvements be made, setting forth a proposed assessment role, and authorizing interim financing for the improvements for the Saratoga Heights Sanitaris Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District.
Any comments, questions?
No.
Moving on to Bill 4585.
Bill number 4585, requested by Craig Tokowski, sponsored by council as a whole. An ordinance approving execution of a reimbursement agreement between the county and the Great Rivers Greenway District for professional engineering services costs for the design of trail improvements at Highway N and Wees Road.
Any comments, questions?
No.
Moving on to Bill 4586.
This is just one page, so I'll read the bill. Bill number 4586, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Dave Hammond. An ordinance waiving liquor license fees for certain concessions and operations of the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of St. Charles for the period July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019. Whereas the St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department requests the fees for liquor licenses for certain concessions and operations of the City of St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department be waived, now therefore be ordained by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the county registrar is hereby authorized and directed to waive liquor license fees for the City of St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department facilities in Blanchett Park, McNair Park, Mueller Park, and Wappahars Park for the period July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval.
No comments, questions? Moving on to Bill 4587.
Bill number 4587, requested by Hope Woodson, sponsored by Dave Hammond. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement for financial assistance grant agreement number 2018-004 between St. Charles County and the St. Louis Jefferson Solid Waste Management District for receipt of funds in an amount up to $60,000.
Any comments? Hearing none. Moving on to Bill 4588.
Bill number 4588, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Peters for allocation of funds for premier 370 business park transportation improvements.
Any comments, questions? Hearing none, move on to Bill 4589.
Bill number 4589, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Peters for use of St. Charles County Transportation Sales Tax Funds for road improvements needed to support the Amazon fulfillment center project.
Thank you. That concludes our bills for introduction. Any announcements or miscellaneous?
Mr. Chairman, I have an announcement. I want to let everybody know that the Centennial, the second phase of Centennial Trail has, was opened Saturday officially. So people are welcome to come out and enjoy it. They can start at the Heritage Museum or start at the Mole Dock Parking Lot on 364 and Upper Bottom Road, or stop at the, the Mole Dock Parking Lot on Muji Road. I didn't have a chance to thank some of the people that were initiated the, the idea of the trail, but I wanted to let the public know that it started in a small organization in Harvester called the Optimus Club, and also a development called Heritage Trails. Those two entities came together and decided to put a trail through Heritage Trail subdivision. And some of the people that were very, very, very prominent in those very beginning ideas was Michael Herbert's father, Gary Herbert, Kevin Cleary, Dr. James, Dr. Richard James, Carl Moss, Ray Stone, Al Mercer, and the developer themselves, which was Steve Grafer and Jeff Cole. And one of the leading forces that really helped me get this off the ground was Betty Yan Kramer and Joe Ortwerth. And then following then was Executive Steve Elman. And also in there in the mix was Ann Zerr. These people didn't get mentioned at the opening, but they were a very integral part of beginning this trail, and I'm very indebted to them. So, and I think the whole county should be too. So come out, enjoy the Centennial Trail, it's for you to enjoy.
Good job, John.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous or comments?
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion is second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Hearing none.
Motion carries.